Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Today we have a charter review study session. I will begin by having Corporate Counsel Miyaki start it for us.
Okay, thank you, Council Chair. Basically, what I've prepared are some comments with respect to kind of an overview of the process, and then perhaps we can get into some more specific issues. I think everyone knows in general that the city charter is like the constitution of the city. However, unlike most organic laws of, say, the state or the federal government, the city's charter is actually subject to the general laws of the state of Michigan, which means it makes a lot of a difference what we're already required to do under Michigan law. And there are some things that are in our charter that we clearly don't follow, but that's because state law has superseded those things. So, for example, we have a residency requirement at section four point one-six of the charter. But Michigan compiled law fifteen point six oh-two essentially eliminates that residency requirement for public employees to a very significant degree. Similarly, we have a compensation provision for elected officials. For example, the mayor is only supposed to be paid seventeen thousand five hundred dollars per year. However, because of the local officer's compensation commission statute and the fact that the city, by virtue of an ordinance provision opted in, that charter provision five point two no longer applies. We also have a civil service system that's established. But as anyone who's in the police or fire department knows, we also have an Act Seventy-eight Police and Fire Civil Service System that exists and applies to those employees because the state law allows us to end up doing that. Similarly, we have Act three forty-five. But I think one of the, for the police and fire pensions. And, but I think one of the other things that needs to be kept in mind, and this is very unusual for most people to get a handle on, because we think of our charter as a constitution, we also have the idea that there is the Public Employment Relations Act, also known as PERA. And sometimes people will say, well, PERA prevails. What does that mean? It means that there is a state law known as the Public Employment Relations Act, it was called PERA, and that is considered to be the preeminent law in the state of Michigan having to do with employee relations. So if something comes about or is determined in a collective bargaining agreement having to do with the terms and conditions of employment of collective bargaining unit employees, even a charter provision cannot end up superseding that. In other words, the charter provision can be superseded by what is agreed to in a collective bargaining agreement, which really is unusual from the standpoint that it's, it's, you know, something that would be approved by the city council on a motion, namely a collective bargaining agreement, but it can basically end up being more important than the city charter provisions that are contrary to it. So those are some big issues. And so then we get into, well, let's say we don't have something that falls into those areas. We want to end up making a change. What kind of change requires a charter amendment? What kind of change requires a charter revision? And then in the, the difference is extremely important because the whole way of doing a charter amendment is completely different from doing a charter revision. So I'm just going to end up reading here because I think that's the best way to end up putting it. Revision amendment, and this is basically what the Michigan Supreme Court said a long time ago, and it's been the law. So revision and amendment have the common characteristics of working changes in a city charter and are sometimes used inexactly, but there is an essential difference between them. Revision implies a reexamination of the whole law and a redraft without obligation to maintain the form, scheme, or structure of the old. As applied to fundamental law such as a constitution or charter, it suggests a convention to examine the whole subject and to prepare and submit a new instrument, whether desired changes from the old be few or many. Amendment implies continuance of the general plan and purport of the law, with corrections better accomplish its purpose. Basically, revision suggests fundamental change while amendment is a correction of detail. All right? So, for example, the courts have held that to end up doing certain things requires a revision, and some things can be done by amendment. So a proposal in a petition for amendment of a city charter to abolish the office of city manager, invest the city manager's powers into the, make them duties of the city commission, has been held to be a proposal for revision of the charter and can only take place by virtue of a charter revision. Similarly, there's case law that says that if you are going to make a city manager subject to recall as opposed to only being able to be removed by the city commission or the city council, that is also a fundamental change that require a revision. Some examples of things that can be done by amendment, however, are increasing or decreasing number of council members, changing the clerk or the treasurer from an elected official to an appointed official, setting bid dollar amounts, namely the thresholds for having to do bidding, and establishing pension plans. So what you want to do makes a big difference in terms of how to proceed. And if you do it by virtue of, if you want to do something that's going to require a charter revision, then a revision of city charter is maybe initiated by a resolution adopted by three-fifths of the legislative body or by a petition signed by at least five percent of the registered voters, unless the present charter provides otherwise. In any case, the decision to revise is for the electors to approve or reject. So that's important. If you sat there and said, look, we need to do a revision because we want to go to a council manager form of government, ultimately, this body would not be able to do that. This body would not even be able to say, that's what we're going to do, even if they said, even if you said, well, we want to end up adopting a resolution for them to do a revision. Because what ends, ends up happening is, first of all, the voters have to agree to it, and then the voters, voters also select a nine-member charter commission to revise the charter, which they don't revise it, they come up with a document that ends up having to be approved by the voters. But none of the members of the city charter revision commission can be elected or appointed city officers or employees. Okay? So you basically come up with a bunch of people who have no affiliation with city government, who have to be elected, and they can basically do whatever they want. It's like a constitutional convention at the local level. They don't end up having any sort of accountability. There are certain things they have to do, but I think it's, you know, to go into those details is probably unnecessary, at least at this point. Meanwhile, if you do an amendment, there's a whole set of things that need to be done. And we've done several amendments in the city over the years. But essentially, they involve a resolution being passed by the, by the city council with the, the language, a statement of purpose that has to end up being reviewed by the Attorney General's Office. The, the general amendment has to go over to the governor's office, but it really just goes over to the Attorney General's Office where the same guy, George, ends up reviewing it. At least if he's still there, I don't even know if he's around anymore. And then you try to make the changes. If he disagrees, you can potentially still override him by a two-thirds vote. But normally, he agree, he tells you what you want to do, you come back, you redo it, and then you put it onto the ballot, and it, it, it goes from there. And there's some publishing requirements and things like that. But again, part of this is to kind of give you an overview and to get a sense of, this is what I have a problem with, or this is what we may have problems with. How would it be a revision or an amendment, and how much we do this? And I should note, in the past, you could potentially end up having a subcommittee. I would recommend if you do any, any sort of portion of this body is involved in this process, it really should be done with an open meeting, subject to the Open Meetings Act, even though it might be looked at as advisory, it might be considered to be deliberations leading to a decision on public policy. So it'd be best not to take any chances with any of this. And then potentially go through the charter. But sometimes people say, geez, there's a bunch of stuff in the charter that makes no sense. We have stuff about justices of the peace, who cares? But then you sit there and say, do we want to end up putting it on the ballot? If it does, it doesn't make a difference anyways. Maybe we should focus on things that are more important at this time. So that's what I have prepared for you. So I'm more than happy to take any questions or if the council as a body wants to discuss what their concerns are. I'm all for it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I have Councilman Abdullah. Go ahead, please.
No, Madam Chair, our counsel did a great job of explaining what a charter is. I just felt for the residents, we should start with something basic about the charter before we move forward. And you did a great job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Councilman Badum.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and to our Corporate Counsel, thank you so much. My question to you is, so if there is this committee put together, whom puts together this committee? Does it, the city council? Does the mayor appoint and city council approve? How do you go about putting together this committee?
You could just do it on an ad hoc basis. My sense is, is that it could be something done with council motion with suggestions from the mayor, potentially in terms of some people involved. I wouldn't be a member of any sort of committee like this, but I should attend all those meetings since I am very familiar with the, the city charter and would almost certainly be the one who would end up having to prepare the paperwork for that purpose. But usually, it should be, I would, I would suggest a, a group of no more than seven, and I think that's a little high, probably around three to five people who would potentially have some knowledge with respect to these matters and might believe that there's a real need for certain things to change.
Yeah, but my, my question to you is, who, I mean, like, for example, and I'm just giving you a hypothetical, if I were to go ahead and appoint somebody, that person is going to be somebody that I know. Yeah, I may not be on there, but this person is definitely going to mirror my views. So how do you make it where it's non-biased?
Well, here's one of the, one of the things about it. Any city charter amendment has to be voted on by the electors or voters of the city. So in a certain sense, if someone comes up with a whole bunch of proposed charter amendments that no one really is interested in except for a certain group of people, they're not going to pass. We've, we actually had an experience where we, the, the charter amendment to separate the libraries from the Parks and Recreation Department and to establish, say, Department of Libraries. If, if my recollection is that that did not originally pass, and everyone considered that to be the most non-controversial thing in the whole wide world because that's the way everything functioned. And then it ultimately ended up passing. But if something doesn't pass, you can't, you have to wait two years to resubmit it to the voters. And so, so my sense is, is, you know, I, I think it's a political process, and it probably wouldn't be bad if you guys could even sit there and say, hey, I would be interested, I would be interested, I would be interested, and I'd be interested. And if everyone is kind of in agreement, then this council chair could appoint his ad hoc committee, or you as a body could end up voting by virtue of a motion just to say, we're going to establish an ad hoc committee to look into this with membership being this person that the mayor suggested, this person that the council suggested, and, you know, three people at large. And I, I don't have any better answer than that, I'm sorry to say.
You did a good job. I have just, I just have two more questions for you, I'm sorry.
No problem.
One question to you is, how do we have a rough estimate of how expensive this would actually cost the, you know, the residents in the city?
I think it's really more depends on, when you say, I, I don't really think it's all that expensive. I mean, it takes lawyer time, but it's not like, you know, some sort of ten thousand dollar project. It's more a matter of, of, especially if people have certain things that they just want to end up changing. They look at something and say, look, we want to change the, you know, we want to separate out the library from the rest of the Parks and Recreation Department, how do we do that? It's not a lot of legal work. It's, it's more a matter of sitting down, working through some of the wording. And then you also have to have a statement of purpose that can be no more than a hundred words, and that sometimes takes some work. But, you know, it takes a lot longer for me to write a, you know, an eighteen-page brief than it does for me to end up coming up with something that's a hundred words long, no matter how much time I might spend on it.
Okay. So you, so what you're saying is, is that we're already having a primary or a general. So if it was added on, because you're already paying for this general election, adding it on is just going to be a couple of, you know, some lawyer fees?
Basically, yes.
Okay. And then my last question to you is, is this something that you're even able to put on this election?
You would not probably be able to do it for the primary. I don't think you can. I don't think you have time. General, it'd be close, and I'm not necessarily certain that's a good idea. When you're talking about something that is a charter change, think about it like it's a constitutional change. It's not something you would, you know, handle without due consideration. And you could put it on, you know, for next year. I mean, there's, you know, I mean, we've got another election year coming up for, you know, Congress and everything else, so.
I appreciate that. Those are all my questions. Are you have the rest of my time, Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Caston, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and briefly, three quick points. Number one, there was a prior charter revision committee of council members. It was myself, Margie Van Houten, and Janet Battalow. And we had, we talked about making the charter gender neutral and taking out all the business about the municipal court and the constable and so on. And if I recall, Gary, it, it, it didn't make it to, the proposed language didn't make it to the Attorney General's Office in time, or that's about as far as it went. So that's number one. Number two, our Act three forty-five, just for background, my father, who was on the original Charter Commission, there was a dispute, John Canfield, who was then the supervisor of what was Dearborn Township, wanted the ability to pick the police chief. I believe in Dearborn, it's, and, and certainly in Detroit, it's mainly the pick of the mayor. The Charter Commission got a presentation from Highland Park, which was back then like the swank city, believe it or not, that hiring from within, Act three forty-five, requires us, so it's a little more due process. In other words, the police and fire chief doesn't get just picked by the mayor and can't be an outsider.
Councilman Canstan, may I interrupt for just one, just a slight correction, slight correction. You're actually referring to Act Seventy-eight.
Act Seventy-eight.
Right. And the city of Highland Park, ironically, I've had some litigation against them in the past, actually ended up getting rid of Act Seventy-eight. But it has to be done through virtue of a referendum, just as it is incorporated. It, it, it's, it's not a charter change. It's something that still has to end up being voted on, first end up being brought in, and secondly, to end up being gotten rid of. And, you know, in, in Dearborn Heights, the interesting thing would be if anyone was to consider that, they'd also have to consider that we also have a charter provision in and of itself that also requires civil service or that the police and fire could insist on such civil service in a collective bargaining agreement. And if they did so, then it would still remain something that the city would be obligated to do. So I'm sorry to interrupt and, and go on on that, Councilman, but.
What, what I was going to say, and I've talked about this with the former Personnel Director, Chris Sullivan, and I should have referred to Act Seventy-eight, it does require more than just a charter revision. I was around when we did the, we took the libraries out of the Recreation Department and failed the first time because the voters thought we were creating the new department and it would be more expensive to run the city. And then it passed the second time. And lastly, we want to look at, I think, the anti-nepotism language, have a ethics commission, and look closely at limits for how the city can spend and who has to approve spending. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Abdul Haq. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, thank you very much for putting this forward. I really appreciate it because this is eyes-opening for all of us, and I hope that we continue learning about our city, our commissions. The more we know about the city and the commissions in every, every department, the smarter we are, the better job we do for our residents. And thank you, Mr. Ramayatki, for putting the time and effort in short time to present this to us. We did have a subcommittee. How that subcommittee before was formed?
I don't know. Council Chair, do you want me to answer from what my recollection is, or?
Yes, or Councilman Caston, did you know?
Constant, maybe.
I'll let Gary go first. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, my recollection was is that there were two. One of them was composed of councilwoman Margie Van Houten, Marge Horvath, and Janet Battalow. And then I believe that there was one involving Councilman Castan, as he's referred to. My recollection is, is that essentially the council members just said, this is what we're going to do, and it just happened. Again, it was kind of ad hoc. It wasn't done with some sort of specific legislative act.
Gary, did the council pick the three? They agreed on the three people?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And they set, the council set the agenda, which items they wanted to change? Or did they take from the public some suggestions?
I think it was more a matter of just reviewing section by section, saying, what about this? What about this? What about this? What about this?
Okay.
Yeah, and, and then there were certain things that were like priority items that.
Did they have, did they have to vote on the things they agreed to change, or?
Well, ultimately, everything had to come to the council, and the council ended up voting on the resolution. And then if there were any changes that George suggested, I don't remember now, then it had to come back for things to be amended. And then it ended up, the ballot language and the resolution all went over to put on the ballot. So I think now, though, the process should be more open. It should be clearly public.
This is what I, my next question is, did the public participate in such changes, or?
Not my, not to my, not that I recall.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should.
I mean, not at the, I'm not sorry, not at the committee level, at the city council level, yes.
Yeah, I think in my humble opinion that we should have it open to the public to hear what we have to change and take their input. Now, you said the contracts supersede the charter.
Contracts can supersede the charter. And I've actually been involved in, had a bit of a litigation about these, these points involving other communities. It can supersede the charter provided it has to do with terms and conditions of employment of bargaining unit employees. So for example, I can give a clear example. I represented someone who was a part-time police officer involved in litigation against a municipality that we will not name at this point. The collective bargaining agreement, according to that particular city, made all of these part-time police officers at-will employees. Union didn't agree with that interpretation, but they didn't have, you know, any stake in the, the issue. I argued that my client was protected by the public safety provisions of the city charter because the collective bargaining agreement, even if they were right about it, could not end up superseding a charter provision unless it had to do with the terms and conditions of employment of bargaining unit employees. My client was not a bargaining unit employee. The court, the federal court agreed. So you have to understand that if you were to say, look, this has to do with discipline, for example, of employees. That's normally something that has to end up being in a collective bargaining agreement. And say you changed, wanted to change that with a charter provision, and the collective bargaining agreement said, you're going to have a grievance arbitration provision, you're going to have a grievance arbitration provision, it wouldn't matter what you ended up having in the charter. So again, and we've had arguments about this or issues about this in the past. Years ago, people tried to give one police chief some special enhancements, and my opinion was that he was not entitled to them because you could not do it by changing the collective bargaining agreement because he was no longer a bargaining unit employee. So, and that, that prevailed with the, with the council. So hopefully that helps, Councilman Abdul Haq.
Thank you. I have several questions, so bear with me, please. Act Seventy-eight, it was passed by the voters and agreed on it, to my knowledge, by the voters.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Do we need to collect signatures for referendum to put it on the ballot? Or can we make resolution language, or, or language to put it on the ballot on the level of the city council?
That I have not, hold on, let me see if, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I have a bunch of materials here, and.
That's okay. Take your time.
I don't know that I have that.
I don't expect to get answered to everything I'm going to ask today, so.
Well, I actually, I actually, if, if I may, da, 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 it says, this act, this is Act Seventy-eight, Section Eighteen. This act shall continue in full force and effect in any city, village, or municipality in which it has been properly adopted until rescinded by a majority of the electors voting thereon and an election at which the question of rescission of this act for that city, village, or municipality is properly submitted. The governing body of any city, village, or municipality by resolution may submit the question of rescission of this act as it relates to the fire department or police department, or both, to the electors of that city, village, or municipality at any regular or special election. So there's your answer.
Thank you. I, I read it, and I just want to make sure that I read the right thing. So by resolution, by city council, the language can go on the ballot if it is approved?
Yes, and, and it has to end up being the exact language that's contained in Section Eighteen of Act Seventy-eight. There's specific, there's specific language that has to end up being adopted.
Section Eighteen of?
Yeah, Section Eighteen, Sub Three.
Thank you. Now, as far as, I, just for clarification, the drop program, I believe, it's separate from the Act three forty-five, which was adopted by the voters. It was contractual agreement. Am I correct on that?
That, I think, is something where you have both an element of it being based on collective bargaining agreements and also an element of it being under Act three forty-five. But I, I don't know enough to be able to answer that question. I'd have to look at it more closely. But I think most of it is, as you've stated, a matter of what is in the collective bargaining.
If you would be kind enough and the permission of the chairman of the council, if you can discuss it with the, you know, the people who are in charge of the drop program. I don't know if it is GRS or their lawyers, if you can give us an answer, maybe, you know, soon enough.
Yeah, I would want to speak to the attorneys from Mr. Van, oh, you know, Van, Van Overbeck's firm. They are very sophisticated in these areas and would probably be able to give me a, a good sense of things, at least from a preliminary standpoint.
Okay, I would appreciate it if we can get some answer to that. Do we have your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Can you hear? I just want to test my microphone. I, I just keep getting this notice on my screen saying microphone has failed and it's connecting me to an ulterior device, but it seems to be working. I just want to get.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, if you can't hear me, Councilman Abdullah will take over until I get a microphone.
Okay, now, if, if we want to change the way, in case, God forbid, what happened to the mayor, you know, in case of this ability or case of death. And I want to suggest that we do it like Dearborn, that the chairman of the council should automatically take over so we don't have any fuss until the next general election. Does that need revision of the charter or just by resolution and put in front of the voters?
It would be, it, it would be appropriate to do it by virtue of a charter amendment. So the latter process.
Right. The charter allowed the mayor, in case of emergency, to hire people for six months. And we do have problem with some departments and we need people really to, to work and make sure that their jobs are secure and they have the opportunity after, let's say, six months or a year to take civil service test and become full-time employees. In case we want to change that portion of the charter, do we need revision or we need resolution?
I'm not necessarily certain. Some of that is all a matter of charter. Some of that is, I believe, collective bargaining driven. And you would probably, I, I know that the HR director right now is, is.
I understand.
She's very familiar with all of the ins and outs. I get pulled in every couple of years to end up giving definitive opinions on civil service stuff, but I know Elizabeth knows this stuff inside out because she administers it.
All right. I, I, I understand that those are collective bargaining. And my next question.
And I might add, if I, if I may, Councilman, some of these issues are also potentially addressed in city ordinances because there is the overall charter provision for civil service that ends up dealing with general government. And then there's also provisions in the city ordinances, and then there are the rules and regulations of the Civil Service Commission. So some of these things are, you know, you, to get to the specifics of it, you kind of need to go into potentially all those different authorities. And like I said, the HR director probably has a better quick handle on them than I do.
Okay. Is she available?
Yes, let me unmute Director Sabata Perry. Go ahead.
Oh, work. Hello.
Hi.
So it is in the collective bargaining agreement with regards to the temporary part-time employees and what type of jobs they can still on a temporary part-time employment. And then with regards to temporary appointments or full-time temporary appointments, that is a matter of the general government civil service rules and regs.
Okay. Now, do we have any control over that? Can we change some of that so we can basically give the mayor or the city, it was consensus, it was the city council? Can we appoint people, you know, for a specific period of time without violating the bargaining agreement with the unions?
So, and we have, and we have over, you know, over the years. And, you know, with regards to part-time employment, with, with regards to extending any sort of six month or giving them preference when full-time jobs come up, that's, that's a way different issue. And, you know, part of that would be part of the negotiation process. And so, you know, that would be something that would be worked out at the bargaining table. But, you know, there have been temporary emergency situations. We've worked with the unions to rectify some of those situations as well.
Because, you know, I feel some people who worked for several years in part-timer, they deserve really some relief that they become full-time employees in the city. I don't know if we can do anything through the charter to adjust that. I have to think about it. And if you have any suggestion, please do, let, let me know at least.
Okay. So, you know, that it falls under the Civil Service Commission with regards, you know, there isn't preference. Everyone's treated equal in the general government and Act 78. So if someone, for instance, works in our jail on a part-time basis and then goes to the police academy, they go through the same process that everyone else does. Same thing with general government. If we have a part-time clerical worker and then we're developing a clerical exam or we're, we're calling for a clerical list, they take the clerical exam. So it depends what capacity and, you know, to the extent, but that's governed by the civil service rules and regulations.
Okay. My next question, and please bear with me, Mr. Ramayatki, is the legal department of our city, the city legal. Right now, the mayor is the one who appoints, you know, the city attorney with the approval of the city council. And it is very vague, and I seen what happened last year or so, that there must be some time limitation put on the administration. In a specific time, there must be some, if the city council or the mayor decided to hire or to fire the legal counsel. There must be an agreement by both of them, by, you know, simple majority from the council and the mayor in, in both times. But if they both agreed, let's say, to hire or, but forbid to fire the legal counsel, there must be time limit to force the administration to come up with name or names. We cannot drag and drag and drag, you know, the time until we go to court. So I want to know, can we do this, Mr. Ramayatki, your resolution to put it on the ballot or charter amendment?
Well, it depends on how far you're going with the, the idea. In which case, let's start with the one possibility. The one possibility is that you're saying, we want to end up making it like a joint, more of a joint appointment of the mayor and the council. And part of it is, is that the mayor by the charter has the removal power of all department heads.
Okay.
So if you're going to end up doing something that changes that fundamental power, you may find yourself in a, in, in a situation where you need a revision. Like, for example, if you could say, well, we can just, we can fire the corporation counsel. That might be problematic from the standpoint that now a power that is given exclusively to the mayor to supervise department heads is now going to be shared or potentially taken over to a certain degree by the city council. And that changes some of the separation of powers. The idea of potentially having a time limit or having some sort of default other than what we currently have now, which is very unclear, would probably not require any sort of revision. It could probably be done by an amendment. You know, there would also be the possibility of saying, can hold over for a certain amount of time and thereafter can't, or, you know, there, there could be a lot of things that could end up being done, believe me. It was not my favorite time to end up going through while everything was up in the air. And it, it applies to only two positions in the city, namely the city assessor and the corporation counsel. Any other department head basically serves at the will and pleasure of, of the mayor and is appointed by the mayor without any sort of input from the council. It would also be possible that something could be looked at with regard to the corporation counsel, kind of like the city of Detroit does. I'm not saying, I, I haven't looked at it very closely, but it strikes me that after all of the issues with Mayor Kilpatrick, there was some effort to give the more power over to the, to the council with regard to that particular office, the Office of Corporation Counsel. However, there was also a revision, as I understand it, of the overall Detroit city charter. So, you know, we, we, we still might have some revision issues approaching that issue. Sorry, I can't be more clear, but the case law is not like.
That's okay. I'm just trying to clarify, you know, the confusion we went through. And we spent time and heartache, you know, for months after months. I would like to see what we can do at this time, just to clarify this, so it doesn't happen again. And I hope it doesn't happen again. I don't know what else I want to ask, but I will yield my time for everybody else, and I thank you again.
Thank you. Councilman Coniston, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And briefly, just remember, if, if it's complicated, the voters will veto it. Like, for example, when we, it, it says in our charter that the libraries are part of parks and recreation. And our libraries play a central role. And so the first time the charter revision was put on the ballot, it failed. So the point is, I think we have to make a list of priorities, the council, the mayor, everybody. You know, and, and what our top three priorities are, or top five, and, and then go from there. And I think we have to develop a consensus. Updating the charter, making it gender neutral, updating the, what can be spent without council approval and indexing it for inflation or reducing it. These appointment of department heads' power, city attorney, all these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Abdullah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Questions for our Councilor Gary Ramayatki, two questions. The first question is, how do we make sure that there's not any bias in any committee? And obviously by having either possible council members, et cetera, et cetera, that, that kind of avoids that a little bit. But that's a concern that a lot has in different charters. We have some bias in what charter revisions come up. Fortunately, we'll have the residents obviously voting on this, and that could be the checkmate to make sure that doesn't happen. But like, for example, somebody putting in something so they can make sure they become, or hypothetically treasurer or assessor or whatever. How do we make sure that we avoid something like that? That's the first question. And the second bigger question is, there's about 39 chapters in, in, in the charter and multiple, 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 multiple sections. It, 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 sometimes it gets, it seems almost overwhelming. Like, where do you even start with this type of stuff? And how do you even finish it in even a year? Because there's just so much information in there. And, and I'm just wondering, is what is the process to be able to hit something like this? You know, as they would say, how do you get an elephant, you know?
Right. I think what Councilman Coniston said is, is on point with regard to that, which is things that have clearly been problems are usually the things that call for prioritization and attention. So that's one thing that you look at. And sometimes there will be also easy things end up taking care of that everyone agrees, just no one does, no one, you know, it just doesn't make any sense anymore. Might have made sense in the 1960s or something. Those sometimes can end up being easy, but as Councilman Coniston also said, and as I said, you know, we thought it was easy to just separate the libraries out from parks and recreation. And then everyone was like, you know, like we're doing something wrong. And I think part of it was, there was a Detroit news editorial that made it sound like it was adding another level of bureaucracy. And it was like, no, it just, you know, it's not like Ken Gribble was overseeing the library on an ongoing basis. It was just doing what we were actually doing. So, so I think part of that is your sub, you know, whatever the committee might end up being, can kind of look at it and say, look, what are, what are, what's our consensus on some of these issues? In terms of what should our priorities be in terms of what we should look at? And then the next step at that point is, and, and I think the first step, getting to your first question, to deal with the bias issue is, it's a, it's a political issue. The council as a, as a body probably should end up discussing people that they would like. Talk about it with the mayor, talk about it with residents and come back with, you know, like five people and hope that they're from a diverse enough backgrounds and parts of the city that you're not going to end up having some sort of stilted committee. And part of the also, the check is, you as a body have to approve anything having to do with amendments. You have to approve the resolution that's going to end up being submitted to the governor's office and the ballot language that's going to go to the Attorney General's office. So you ultimately have a, a very significant veto on that. And then ultimately, the voters also have a veto on that because they ultimately have to approve any sort of an amendment. So I hope that helps.
It, well, just, if you could just address the issue of so many sections, so many chapters, like, where do you stop? So you just primarily have the important stuff that's come up in the past, not necessarily go through one chapter at a time and one section at a time, which seems crazy overwhelming.
Yeah, but at the same time, a lot of stuff, when you look at it, you go, why would we touch that?
Okay.
You know, I mean, you just sit there and say, yeah, that seems reasonable. Let's just move on.
Okay.
It, it's not controversial.
Okay, thank you.
Next I have Councilman Baydum. Go ahead, please. You muted yourself again.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Yes, when my dog starts to bark, I don't want anybody to get interrupted. My question to our, our corporate council, and thank you so much, by the way, for answering all these questions. I, I see you definitely briefed yourself here. My question to you is, let's just say that we did go through this and we made some changes, but there are, you know, you know, there, there were some bargaining things that happened prior to this. Can, can the city be sued? Could we go to court? Could we get, as a city or council, be sued or get in trouble at any, any point because of this?
Well, I, I, I don't think that it's likely, but it depends on what was submitted. I mean, sometimes people have gone to court. Obviously, there's some case law with respect to this. So if you come up with something that's more controversial or try to do something that may not be authorized, then you're going to potentially end up in court. But most of the time, if you're going to end up making amendment, you're not going to have a problem with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Abdallah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Contract negotiations. The charter gives the mayor basically absolute power to negotiate the contracts and the union contracts. And the city council basically is like figurehead. They bring the contract to the city council, and I remember they voted seven to zero one time. And within 24 hours, the mayor and his assistant approved everything which the city council disapproved. Now, can we, through resolution, through amendment? uh, make little, the mayor, uh, has limitation to what he can give away in the contract.
Well, and I think I know what you're referring to. And I was involved in a closed session with respect to that. So I think what you might have taken away from that particular situation was different than some of the reality, but I can't go into that because it had to do with a closed session. I'd be more than happy to go into a closed session with you with respect to that point uh, and tell you what my recollection is of all the events, if that would be helpful, either now or sometime in the future.
Can we through an amendment goes on the ballot? Uh, basically, put some kind of language that the city council has a say. And really, any contract instead it goes to arbitration and here we go. One person makes the decision for the whole city. We end up carrying a bag of millions of dollars for the next so many years.
That is the issue that I'd want to talk to you about in a closed session.
Madam Chair, would you be kind, uh, we we really need to know what happened in order to be able to correct that.
Yeah, I could even prepare a written document as the basis for a closed session with regard.
My opinion, what I'm referring to, probably everybody knows what I'm referring to. I feel that the resident of our city have a bond for lifetime. They pay on it. And the principle always is the same or more.
Okay, I guess we agree at this time. We will go into a closed study session for that at a future meeting.
Okay.
Um, our next meeting, we do already have one. We can do it two weeks after that, if you like.
Sounds good. It's in your hand, and you've been very, very kind to do all these things.
Corporate Council Miyaki, would you be prepared to do it at the meeting after? My calendar's under here. I can't.
I have nothing in my calendar for the coming weeks that would prevent me from being able to do anything in the evening as far as I know, so.
All right, we will plan for that in the future. And next I have Councilman Constan.
Thank you.
I I just want to remind everybody, I'm sure, uh, Corporate Council Miyaki is where this there are a lot of things in the chart, a lot of provisions in the city charter that need to remain that help, uh, make, uh, hiring uh, and different things, non-political prohibitions against any signature gathering or fundraising uh, in city buildings with city employees, conflicts that will prohibit somebody from being appointed, uh, to anything. Um, you know, the provision in the charter about spending the amount that has to be approved by the council. And all all that has to remain in the charter. And I will tell you that Inkster, um, they had a city manager, and then they had some bad luck with some bad city managers. And so the, uh, new mayor, uh, Byron Nolan, who was an attorney, pushed through a charter revision and made it a strong mayor for my government. Some say he did it. He had the clerk do it with city money, and he indexed his, uh, salary as uh, the new strong mayor position with what the mayor in Dearborn made. And so he had a salary of over a hundred grand a year. And then this last election, he was voted out of office because of that. But just keep in mind that the, there are provisions in the city charter, Gary can probably speak to this better than me, that make hiring, you know, civil service, these different things less political, and we want to keep those items in the charter.
Council Chair, do you, do you want me to respond to that?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Um, actually, it's an area that I have ended up, uh, doing a lot of work on in my private practice. Uh, as, um, some individuals know, um, I usually represent the city with like Act seventy-eight matters or civil service matters. And my experience has been that in general, uh, civil service, Act seventy-eight are very helpful types of things to end up having. Um, and also are very helpful in the sense of being able to avoid potential claims based on discrimination because the process that you follow, um, is tends to be done by merit principles. And that usually gives you a better, uh, way of being able to avoid claims that you're discriminating against particular individuals and so forth. So, uh, that those are, those are, that's my sense of things anyways, based on both my work for the city as well as litigation that I've seen and been involved in against certain municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I looked at the date. That would be the July thirteenth meeting. Is that okay with everybody? And the mayor, is that okay with him too?
That's fine.
Okay, council members?
Is it at six o'clock, Madam Chair?
No, it will be seven o'clock because we have to start the meeting, then we go into a closed study session. That's why I'm not doing it next week because we already have one. And out of respect for the residents, I don't want to stay off too long.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, and I don't see the mayor. I was going to ask him too, but I guess he's, looks like he might have left. Okay. Anyways, at this time, is there any further comments from the council before I open it to public comment? Okay, at this time, I will open it to public comment. You have a limited two minutes. Go ahead, please. This time, I see no one from the public wanting to comment. So at this time, it concludes our study session. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you.